Good evening and welcome to the July 23, 2012 regular meeting of the Edina School Board. We do have a quorum this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The one set of minutes we have is for the regular meeting of June 25. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 25. Any additions or corrections to the minutes as written? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been approved. Do we have any requests for members of the audience to speak? We have none. First item on the agenda is the, under reports, is the district's big three goals. Dr. Dressen? Want to review the agenda as long as it's up?
I can do both, yes. Quickly on the agenda, we have a couple of reports that we'll be going over tonight. First of all, just giving you an update on the big three goals, as well as our leadership model. That'll be shaping how we do our work in the leadership level through the 2012-13 school year. Variety of consent agenda items, including personal recommendations and some memberships. These are annual memberships that the district joins every year to help support our mission. We have some field trips going on, overnight trips, as well as some gifts that we, once again, will accepting under the action items. We do have two-year compensation packages for both the superintendent's advisory council, which is our lead team members, as well as the Edina administrative group, which makes up, many of our principals are within that organization, or all of our principals, I should say, are part of that organization. Those are two-year agreements. We have a facility use agreement with the City of Edina for Braemar, a variety of other purchases, and policy revisions. You can see, again, we're going through our annual process of reviewing all the district policies. We, under the discussion area, you can see we're looking at our 2012-13 agenda. So our agenda lines up with our action items. And then, again, a variety of policies that are part of the review process that we'll discuss at the time of the meeting. We do have some changes that the board will be, have paper copies of at their table that we'll also be discussing. But, again, these discussion items do not go for formal board action tonight. And then we have some information items, and that would conclude our board agenda.
Thank you, Rick. And we're off to the presentation. Big three goals.
The big three goals align with the district's strategic plan. And if I can... It is discussion that we've had as a school board level and leadership level over the past months, much because we've been working hard on the strategic plan that was approved at the June school board meeting. Again, it aligns well with our mission. Our mission has those strong components of partnership, educating all individuals to thrive in a rapidly changing, culturally diverse global society. I mean, that is the work we're doing, and we continue to make sure we remind all of our employees of the work that we're doing. Our vision that we're now moving forward on, again, is not only to be recognized nationally, but also internationally, and start defining what that means, continuing to have a high set of expectations, and one of the key phrases in there, "prepare each learner." And so, again, it's not just students, it's learners. So it's, and all of us need to continue to be lifelong learners, to be successful both in college career and life. Our big three goals, stay very consistent with what we've done as a district. We continue to really look at personalized learning experiences, how we connect with all of our learners at a personal level, and how do we provide opportunities for our learners to advance in a personalized manner. Again, to be comprehensive, early childhood through grades 12-plus, and so we have a good, strong alignment in the work that we do. And then, finally, we continue to grow our partnerships. Under personalized learning, some of the major initiative work that we'll be driving forward on, again, is this whole personalized learning system of how we provide interventions for advancement of all our learners, so that if the student needs extra support or is ready to advance, that we provide those options and opportunities. We do a lot around baseline assessment work, so we can make sure there's an accountability component, and then what are best practices to move them forward. Continue to grow that work. That's been our work very strongly in place over the last three to five years. Really, one of the focuses that came out of our strategic planning was the desire for us to close the gap. This gap is where we have a gap in achievement or a gap in opportunity among our student groupings, that we develop a plan of how we'll formally do that. Again, we've been making progress on that, but yet to put a date and timeline on it, and we hope to do that, yet this first semester. Continue to look at kindergarten options of growing more opportunities for our earliest learners to join in an exciting experience. We partner with our community education program to offer kindergarten plus, and this year we've added some scholarships to that work. Our technology work continues to be a driving force. The board met in a work session earlier today, just talking about the whole bring your own learning device to school, and how we can help maybe bridge that matter. But, again, technology was a big piece of the strategic plan, will continue to be a key in the learning. This will be our first year that we'll be able to implement our new technology levy to help in that effort. The second around coherent and comprehensive programming is the literacy plan. This is a new plan that really is driven by, at a state level, but localized here in Edina. Mary Kirchhoff, one of our literacy coordinators, was critical in helping in some of the planning at the state level, but that initiative, which we feel like we've implemented at a certain level, will now be fully implemented, and we'll support that work, again, making sure that there is full reading by grade three among all our students. Special ed center-based programming, taking a look at, do we have the locations of our center-based programs in the best place for our students and for all our student population? Taking a look at our elementary demographic balance, and making sure that our elementaries reflect the demographics of our student population. Also, taking a look at a audit of our grades nine through 12, making sure that the courses we're offering are really 21st century-ready, taking a look at possible shifts in our secondary schedule and credit requirements. These are all areas we'll study over the first few months of the school year, and then actually be moving forward with some possible recommendations. This will be implemented in 2013-14. And the final one is, again, around our strategic plan of increasing flexible options for learning in grades nine through 12, increasing options in grade nine, as well as providing some learning options beyond the classroom in grades 10 through 12. We have plans built around each one of these. Partnership is our third key one, developing a communication plan, and we welcome Susan Brodt, who's our new communication director, to our team. This will, again, be one of her major roles, that she'll be guiding the district forward on, and how we continue to build our partnerships through communications, helping our community understand how we're changing as a school district, and how we need to reach out to all of our learners at all ages, all demographic areas. Facility plan continues to be an area that we have to talk about as a district. Our buildings are aging, they're being used in different ways. How do we make sure our buildings are ready for the learning that's going to be occurring over the next years? That's an area of study that we're working hard on. Community education strategic plan, we've done a study on that, and that'll be implemented, again, this fall. Other areas around partnership is our staff workload, finding new ways to make sure that we're maximizing the time we have our teachers working for the benefit of our students, and looking at some options of how we can enhance their efficiencies and their effectiveness. Building and grounds improvement plan, we've been working over the past 12 months with our building and grounds team, or our custodial team, on a plan that will help in doing their work, especially as we continue to look at how our facility needs are evolving. And then, finally, the work of professional learning communities. And this really is the 21st century way of how teachers connect, help students in their learning. It's their collaborative setting where they work together in teams to do the problem-solving necessary to make sure our students are doing the best they can do in the classroom. As we move into actions, the administration's role is to coordinate it, where it'll be timelines and tasks will be rolled out. Some of that information will be shared at this meeting, as well as meetings to come. The board agendas will reflect those timelines. We have specific tasks that need to become official, as well as expected outcomes, to make sure this all aligns, and then the planned actions. Some of these actions will go into place as early as September 1. Some will move into place more formally in 2013-14. And that would conclude the overview of our yearly action plan. If there are questions of the board, or additional comments from the administrative group, I would welcome those.
Questions, anybody? Comments? Next up, the Edina leadership model, Rick?
To carry that work out at a leadership level, obviously, it's the board's role in governance to make sure that what we share and what the board approves through the strategic planning process and through these annual goals are occurring. So our leadership work that we accomplish at a district level, and this is not just administrators, but this is across the board, because everybody has a role in leadership, what we really want to do is our leadership to align with our mission, our values, and our vision, that we, again, have that strong alignment, early childhood through age 85. So this isn't just a K-12 program, this is really early childhood, and includes our community education services. So we really see it as a continuum of services, the important role of governance and management in this work, and how we have our roles defined, so we understand the role of school board versus managers or administrators, that we make sure our leadership work aligns with the available resources we have, as well as our committees and our councils and our task force. Our work is to enhance, obviously, student success, the partnership, the communications, and making sure we have a strong decision-making process that's transparent and timely. Again, around leadership, we want to support and provide the resources and the accountability at the site level. The closer we can get decision-making to where the learning's actually occurring, the stronger we think that learning's going to be. So, again, this is not a new initiative or new work. This is work we've been working very purposeful on as a district level through our strategic planning process over the past many years, again, to localize our decision-making at the sites, at the district program, at the community level. Again, it's a long tradition, it's a story of success, and we continue to stay committed to that. Our leadership work focuses on leadership versus management, so, again, it's continuing to grow our skills as leaders, that we exit functions that aren't aligned, so we'll continue to look at things that we can exit from our work, to make sure we're purposeful in our work. We want to recognize the value of technology, and we continue to grow that as an area of how we can manage our leadership work through technology. And our work that, over the past 12 months, at a leadership level, both building principals and district office administrators have been working hard on collaboration. So our work is really truly on growing our ability to grow trust, taking risks, and being just remarkable. We don't have to be perfect, we don't have to be ordinary, we're just going to be remarkable. And that's been our work that we focus on. Again, from a leadership standpoint, the decision-making body is the school board representing the community, and we recognize that. The leadership level, the lead team, is the district administrators, so it's representative of a team of district office administrators. The administrative team is our building principals, and then the action team are administrators, teachers in special assignments, or staff members who are coordinating areas, so we have strong alignment, again, through our programming. When we look at our lead team, you can see a list of administrators. Most of those attend building, our board meetings, but, again, it's the range of people who have administrative responsibilities over K-12 or E-12 programming. Also, on our lead team, we have an elementary principal representative and a secondary principal representative. Quarterly, when we do our strategic planning, we also have the president of the teachers' association, who also will participate as a lead team member. Our major functions are around communications, around accountability to our leadership actions, ensuring that our policies are being implemented, participating in new learning, and coordinating the leadership training that does need to occur within the district. The administrative lead team, again, are our elementary principals, our secondary principals, and our assistant principals, also our assistant director of special services, part of that team, as is our assistant, our director of enrollment, and, what is that, school improvement. Thank you, Mary Mandarfield's also on that team. Again, their primary functions are much more localized at the site level, and then their responsibility, specific responsibility area. The action team is, again, all those people who have K-12 responsibilities in leadership, and then the coordinators and supervisors. Again, it's a communication network, they're involved in new learning, and this creates that alignment that we need to make sure that we're successful in reaching our mission. At each site level, we also have expectations set that each site team then needs to carry out, so we identify their leadership areas, specific responsibilities and job descriptions, things that need to guide their work on a continuous improvement plan. Again, it's all district policy-based, so it aligns with what their data protocols are, how they make decisions, all these are defined and shared. Expectations around the leadership, site leadership, expectations around communications, around web presence, and this is some of the things that we talked about at our board meeting work session earlier tonight, again, defining these expectations, so these are being carried out, how we carry out staff development, the school improvement goal process, and also our work around racial equity. And that would conclude kind of an overview of how our leadership work is being done, starting at that school board level right down into the site and program areas. Annually, we try to give an update to the board of how that aligns to the mission of the district, and tonight's the night. Again, I'd welcome any additional comments or questions.
I always have a question about the exit of non-aligned functions and activities. Do we have any idea what some of those are that we might actually be taking off of people's plates?
Well, I would say one of the examples, we're trying to do more work virtually, so we do project lists, and so from an operations standpoint, some of the specific tasks, this summer, all of our summer work is done on a project task base that is just being monitored via the net, you know, via the internet, and so we are not meeting to discuss it. People are just doing their follow-up and checking off where they are in their completion process. We're taking a look at protocols as it relates to email, of when do we carbon copy, when do we have to respond, when is the timely place to respond, so, again, we're trying to look at some efficiencies there as well. But part of our planning process going forward now is try to be purposeful on that. I think some of the exit work is working differently, rather than just exiting. How do we work differently to create some efficiencies? So maybe it isn't just exiting, but it's also just taking a look at how we do the work.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our consent agenda. We had a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve tonight's consent agenda. Rick, if you could just walk us through that quickly, please?
I will. Again, it's our personal recommendations. We have some new hires. Our most recent hire is Jason Doctor. Jason is the new assistant principal at Southview Middle School. Previous to this, he had been a teacher in the Valley View School, also been an alt-comp coach for us, very strong candidate. It was a very competitive pool, and Jason was our top choice going forward. He's already ready to step into action, and will be in full swing come the first day of school, so we welcome Jason. We do have a variety of other hires that are also just part of that new hiring process. Again, we have our annual memberships, which are AMSD, which is the Association of School, Metropolitan School Districts. There's a lot of lobbying support for us, the Minnesota School Board Association, the Minnesota State High School League. We appoint our medical advisor as well. We have some field trips that are being pursued around the debate team. I think there was discussion over the weekend, and these are the possible trips they'll be taking that we felt we needed board action, but once the team is formed, they're going to determine which trips make the most sense, but in order to meet the timelines, they need to respond at that fashion. And then, finally, we do have some gifts that, again, we acknowledge and thank our community for the support they provide our schools and our students.
Thank you, Rick. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion around the consent agenda, or items you'd like removed from the consent agenda?
I just want to publicly thank Eric Nelson, even though he's not here, for his quick response. When I saw four debate trips, I was, my eyes kind of crossed, and he very quickly replied with what Rick supplied us with tonight, that this is sort of an if situation, and then it was like, okay, fine. But, thanks, Eric.
Additional comments regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under the action portion of tonight's meeting, the first action item up for approval is the salary compensation for members of the superintendent's advisory council for 2012 through 2014. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the acceptance.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Gwen, why don't we take team on this? Superintendent Advisory Council, again, makes up the district admin, several of the district administrators. These are term contracts of two-year. Compensation package, again, aligns with what we'd set for parameters. We did expand performance pay components, so it aligned with our Edina alt-comp plan for our administrators, so there's a higher degree of accountability around that planning. The Edina Administrative Council is our principals, as well as a couple of other administrators. Again, the two-year package falls within the parameters, again, also extends performance pay to align with the Edina alt-comp plan, which is aligned with our teachers, and Gwen, maybe you can build around that.
I think you have covered all of them. The only addition was that there would be a stipend for administrators, for all administrators going with the bring-your-own-device that the district is initiating.
Okay. And this did go through HR, and we did discuss it there, and the administrative council is the next, but that'll be approved separately after this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 yes.
So this is, the motion we're approving is just for...
Thank you very much.
The SAC.
That's right.
Quick question, the...
Go ahead, Lenny.
Total compensation package increase, that includes the technology and also includes the alt-comp equivalent?
Yes, it does. All are included.
There's a question about how the percentage is calculated. The percentage is the overall compensation, so the increases may vary by position, but it's the overall percentage that's the increases?
That is correct.
And we do that based on comparisons with neighboring districts, or looking at tenure and things like that?
Yes, we look at tenure, we look at many of our western suburban neighbors to look at the comparison, and we are not at the bottom, but, and we're not at the top, we're really kind of in the middle in terms of salary increases and the total compensation.
Additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the salary compensation for members of the superintendent's advisory council for 2012, 2013, 2014, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the master agreement with the Edina Administrative Council, 2012-2013. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Again, this...
And I already gave the background.
Agreement covers a number of our administrators and principals. Gwen, this is, this is actually a negotiating group. We had negotiations as a part of this. Any items to add?
No, I think Rick did a very fine job earlier, and, again, as I shared before with the superintendent's advisory council, this group will also have a stipend for purchasing technology, it's a small stipend, to purchase technology for the bring-your-own-device initiative.
Okay.
In the background information here, it doesn't say that it was reviewed by the HR committee. Usually, it says that. Was, is that just, was left out, and your committee actually did review it and was recommending it, or?
Yes, yeah, we were involved throughout the whole process.
And it was also within the parameters established by the board earlier for settlement of those contracts? Because, again, that typical sentence is left out of my background material, I just want to make sure that that was just left out, rather than that this is something different.
Correct, it was.
And Rick or Gwen, could you likewise comment on how this settlement compares to our neighboring districts?
Again, it is in the, it's in the middle. We looked, again, at, you know, Minnetonka, Wayzata, Hopkins, some of the suburban school districts, and it's very much in the middle. And it's not just in the middle for salary, but we also looked at the total package, including our benefits, and our benefits, our health benefits are actually better than several of the other neighboring school districts that we have. So we looked at the total package, but we also looked at specific aspects of the package.
When you say the health benefits are better, that means it costs the district more?
No, it means that the, that in many cases, the employee is paying much more than what we have been paying, and it really does vary, because some districts are self-insured, and some districts are not.
And were there changes at all to the master agreement, or were there just changes on the compensation numbers and the health benefit contribution?
There were, there were only language changes to the general contract, in that we had some old language that we needed to clean up, that really should have been cleaned up years ago, such as some strike language. We haven't had strike, you know, many, many years throughout the state, so it was that kind of language that we cleaned up.
So no other language that had a financial impact?
Correct, none that had a financial impact.
Additional questions or comments? And how this typically works is, because this is a bargaining unit, they bargain and settle their agreement, and then the SAC agreement is negotiated based on where the principals and their, the other members of that group end up settling out. So that's the basis for the, ultimately, for the SAC agreement, so. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the master agreement with the Edina Administrative Council, 2012-2014, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is the facility use agreement for Braemar Sports Facility with the City of Edina. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Who wants to provide a little background? Margot?
I will. Good evening. We have been working with the city. They've been providing us information on the plans for upgrading the locker rooms at the Braemar Sports Facility. The city's entered a partnership with some private donors to enhance those locker room facilities. So the attached agreement addresses the custodial and utility fees associated with those new facilities, but also puts in writing the clarification of our existing ice time and ice arena cost that we currently are paying. The city also has passed on information to me to share with you tonight, that Drive for the Hive, which is the local donors, has wired the entire amount into the city's bank account, and all other agreements have been signed and executed. And the last part of this project is, to get this going, is the agreement between the City of Edina and the school district, just for our usage. And these additional costs would be funded by a combination of, a portion of it, of annual lease levies for the ice arena cross, and the remainder through the activities budget, and John Soma will plan accordingly in his budget for that.
So are the total additional costs, the $11,433, or is there a different number for the additional?
That is the total additional cost on a annual basis.
And do you know how that breaks down between the levy and the activities budget?
The greater portion will be in the activities budget. Some of that, now, we're right in the process of submitting information to the state through MDE, actually, within the next few weeks, so I'll know more about that breakdown in a few more weeks.
And it's an eight-year agreement, and those rates are flat for eight years?
The ice arena rates will not necessarily be flat. And the utilities would be based, and custodial rates would be based on current rates at that time. Similar to the custodial agreement in terms of hours and pay and the utilities, is very similar to what we're doing in reverse for the city gyms, where we're documenting that time in terms of the utilities cost, when the city uses the gymnasiums, and then also the custodial time, and it, very, very similar, very, very similar.
But in the past, the rate has been flat for a number of years, correct?
For the ice time?
Total cost for Braemar.
I would have to check with John on that, in terms of the actual cost per hour. When I see it, it's a total dollar amount, and that can depend on the number of events we have there, whether we're hosting home events, or we're traveling in one season or another. whether we're hosting home events or we're traveling in one season or another, or we have more practices.
Okay. It's been very consistent. I mean, it has been very consistent. And I think what, we've been in a very, it's been a much more of a handshake agreement. And it's been a year-to-year and the city and the district, I think there's a benefit in us formalizing it. And I think the other thing is this is going to enhance the programs, both the girls' and boys' hockey program. And so again, we think some of that, then it needs to, some of those expenses will be borne by the program itself. And so we're just working on some creative solutions now that, and that $11,000 is a projected number that we think is very accurate. But we'll continue to work within our current athletic budget, especially as it relates to the hockey program and the boosters, to resolve that with gate receipts and a variety of combinations that we can capture the $11,000 and feel it is a real good advancement for the program and for our community. So we thank our private donors as well as the city and the district for this work and this effort.
Additional discussion? I also like that you have a clause in here if it's not completed that, you know, the new rates don't go into effect until it is completed. So that's also good to see.
And there also is an exit clause, or if something were to change, the district does have options to review this.
Great. Good work. Additional questions or comments? Kathy, anything from Park Board that's been around this or things to add?
No, this was, this was from the Park Board's perspective and the city's perspective. This was the last piece. As they were talking about putting it together, they always mentioned that they had to get some sort of agreement with the school district to get that going. And that just got pushed to the end and this is not what we see.
Thanks.
So there's a 1.03C and C is blank. Was something supposed to be in there on page, I don't know what it is, 1.03 sub-C?
Oh, good. Yes, I see that. Page 152 of the...
I believe.
That may actually just be formatting. I'll double-check to make sure that we're not missing something critical.
Additional discussion? All those in favor of approving the facility use agreement for Braemar Sports Facility with the City of Edina? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is substitute custodian pay rates. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. A little background here, Gwen. Margot?
We're just, in an effort to standardize our substitute rates, looking to have this approved at 80% of our current hourly custodial classification salary. We did some research on what other districts are paying for their custodial subs. And we're just looking to have a sub pool externally on a short-term needed basis. We use existing staff and try to make it work. But when somebody's out for a longer period of time, we do need to have a pool of substitutes to access to, for our custodial staff. And this would just standardize what that rate is for those subs.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Next up is the purchase of Promethean boards and installation for Cornelia Elementary School. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve Promethean boards for Cornelia to cost $23,799. If you want to provide any background discussion, this went through finance, I'm assuming?
No, it's actually just, it was part of, built into the budget. Because of the size of the purchase, $23,000, it had to come to the board for action, the eight boards. But it's built into the budget for approval, part of the, just our tech equipment plan. And Cornelia's eight boards just went through the bid process and determined this was the, first tech was the company to do the work.
So you're saying this is the addition of eight of those boards? Do the rest of the Cornelia classrooms already have them?
There's a variety. I do not know to account, no, I don't believe so, not all of them, but this is their first step.
This is their step toward getting that digital standard?
Yeah, I shouldn't say their first step, their next step, yeah.
And Margot, do you understand, was there multiple bids received here? Or is it just, it doesn't have to go to bid because this who has, this is who has the state contract?
When we're accessing state contract, we do not have to go to bid.
Okay.
Because that, that's part of the joint, they've already gone to bid for it. So there's an exception to bid law requirement.
Yep. No, they just didn't see that in here and so that's why I'm asking the question, so. How does state contract? Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries to approve the Promethean boards. Next up, we have a series of policies. Can we handle those as a group? If someone would like to make a motion to combine policies 104, 420, 431, 510, 602, and 626 into a single motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved to amend revised policy 104 to include policies 420, 431, 510, 602, and 626. Any discussion about the amendment? Sing none. All those in favor of merging all the policies into a single motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. The items have been amended. Who would like to start on policy 104?
Should we make a motion now?
Oh, yes. Make a motion?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the amended combined motions.
I will just note that these policies are the same as we saw in our June meeting with the exception in revised policy 431. Personnel compensatory practices in one paragraph, we changed a word "the", or changed the word employees to an employee because we had to be singular versus plural. So that is the only change that was made from the July meeting.
Okay, so these are all what we saw in June?
Exactly. I take that back to the June meeting. Correct. One, one, one word change.
Any other questions or items that have come up since we saw these last time through? All those in favor of approving the revised policy 104, 420, 431, 510, 602, and 626? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Those motions have been approved. We have a few discussion items this evening. First up is 1213 Agenda. Rick, did you want to walk through this at all or just have it here for information?
Again, this is informational at this point for the board. It aligns well again with our routine items as well as when the strategic planning actions would be occurring for the board. So it reflects our current practices. And I would say that we'll probably have a more formal review at the August board meeting. Just also go on the web for community members to be able to track, or staff to track, so they have an idea of some of our items that might be pertinent to their area would be coming forward for discussion and action.
Great. Any other comments about the agendas, 1213? Next up, we have board committee appointments, liaisons, and representatives. This is just the current ones that are in place. I heard from two of you regarding building assignments for this coming school year. And you'll probably hear from me here in the next month or so, so we can get those squared away. Typically try to move those around. A number of you have been at the same sites for several years, so.
I just want to clarify one correction on the current liaisons to schools. I'm a liaison currently with Creek Valley. And I believe, I'm not sure, is it with Normandale?
Yeah, the liaison for the schools here are...
Yeah, these are actually the proposed ones, aren't they, Randy?
Yep.
Because my two have changed.
They are proposed.
They're all, ours are all different.
These are the proposed ones.
So they are all intended to shuffle.
Because I know my name's changed in response.
Okay. Guess I missed that, so. Probably something. Okay. Next item is the, we have policies, 538, 617, 627, 634. Let's start with those.
So those policies, the 538, 617, 627, 634, those were all ones that you were given, a new electronic copy today and then new hard copies at your place tonight because when they were uploaded to the board book that we use, some of the proposed edits and changes did not show up in the board book version. The board book just accepted changes, so you wouldn't be able to track all the proposed changes we were making. So that's why you have new copies of those. And for most of those policies, field trip policy, there's changes to reflect how we actually do field trips to tighten up some of the requirements for the paperwork to be put forth and just make it clear to buildings and sites how they do field trips. Education programs, class size and staffing, we had some, again, some definitions and things in there that we no longer use. Cleans it up and makes it more aligned with what we do now. Athletics and fine arts, the same thing. Talked to the high school and they had some suggestions of things that they wanted to change to make it more in line with what they do. And then 634, the electronic technology policy, a lot of suggestions from the district media. So it's more in line with the way technology is being used in our buildings today and also talking about personal devices, students' personal devices and making sure that those uses would be captured within the policy. But they're all, all of those policies are sort of long and involved. And so it's probably, since you just got the new versions today, something you probably want to look over between now and our August meeting. And if you have questions, comments, changes, suggestions, talk to the policy committee members because we're going to have another meeting on this as well to make sure that all the changes are correct.
In terms of the electronic technologies policy, anything in there that you feel would, would affect students in any great way? Any of the changes?
Well, some of the language on electronic technology addresses the creation of work in addition to some of the language that has been standing there about using it just to review content or share content. There's also a creation of content amendment to the language.
So actually broadening.
Broadening, limiting.
Correct. But so I was trying to get at, great, thank you.
But also broadening their responsibility and their accountability for what they're doing with the technology.
Yes. Very good. Thank you.
And also making clear that if you're using a district device and it's one that you've checked out or taken home, that the policies that would apply to the device while it was being used on campus would also be applied to it if you were using it in another location, if it's one of our pieces of equipment.
And we do have electronic versions of this as well that have been emailed to us, so we should have the correct versions.
But since these are, I mean, these are some real nuts and bolts as far as how the place operates. So I would really ask that all of the board members take some time, go through these, make sure they make sense to you. You know, we've been looking at these words through so many meetings that it would stand to check up on us.
And these are scheduled for approval at the next meeting, the August meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Now we can move on to review, unless someone has something, review of scheduled 300 series policies administration?
And again, most of the changes that you'll see in these policies are cleaning up language, making it more streamlined or making it clearer. As we read them, we weren't sure what, you know, some things made and meant and to align them with the way we're really doing things. And some of them, as we read through them, we realized we simply didn't need them or we could combine them in one policy. They're all fairly short policies. The ones that we rescinded, the superintendent contract duties and responsibilities, which used to be 304, so you put that as part of 303, and so it's selection and contract, which is still, you know, not more than a page, but it's both policies together. The district leadership model, it didn't really tell us much more other than that yearly the superintendent was going to tell us what his leadership model was. It seemed we didn't really need a policy about that. And then administrative duties, performance improvement and evaluation, again, was more of a, something that's just contained in other personnel policies and contracts and didn't really need a policy on that.
But we did note that with the new legislation that the superintendent has to evaluate principals which hadn't been in there before. And so we did add that.
And Kathy, just for point of clarification, since the other policies were incorrect in board book, are these ones correct, though?
These are correct except for, you should have gotten...
Because I didn't see these in our packet tonight.
Yes, in your packet tonight, you should have new policy 304, 306, and 307.
So just a few of them.
Just a few of them missed some of the changes again where when it got uploaded to board book, you didn't see it. So those again were...
So some of them are correct. Otherwise refer to the ones that we got tonight.
Otherwise refer to the ones that you got tonight.
And Julie, are these also in that last electronic email that you sent us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they are.
So you have them both ways.
Thank you.
So under policy 303, it says the school board will use an approved instrument to evaluate job performance. What is an approved instrument?
I think that's defined further down in the policy. I've just got to bring mine up here. I'm in a difference.
Lenny, which section?
303.
Roman numeral two.
Roman numeral two, thank you.
General statement of policy.
It's more, it's more specifically set out in section 5B, I think. Gives you a little more information.
The intent there is that it's a standardized way of evaluation versus someone's personal opinion? I don't know, maybe once you look at it again, Kathy, you'll have a different way of communicating that.
Yeah, we can look at that language.
Yeah, it does sort of make it sound like we have a form and there's no real form. It's just the idea that we're going to be...
Yeah, I think if there's joint, the intent would be that the superintendent agrees that's a fair tool along with the board to evaluate the superintendent. That's the board's role.
Yeah, we do have the criteria. We worked through all of it.
Right, yeah. So we actually do have a form, but it's not an appendix here. I don't know whether, I would think that we don't really need it as an appendix here. You know, this isn't a form that students and parents and stuff need to see.
I think we can look at the language.
We can, we can look at the language, see if we can make it clear. I've made a note.
Any other questions or comments in these 300 series policies? Sing none. We're on to, I guess that's it. We're just rescinding 304, 307, and 308. Those have been covered elsewhere. Any other discussion items? Any announcements?
Do want to welcome our two newest administrators to the team, Randy Smazl and Susan Bratt. Randy joins us from Rockwood, Missouri, teaching and learning director, doing a great job, stepped in already in, I think, maybe May. June was your first date. I can't even remember, Randy, but very much keeping him active and we welcome him. And then Susan Bratt was in West St. Paul prior to coming to Edina. And then Susan Bratt was in West St. Paul prior to coming to Edina, in the same busy schedule that you'll be seeing a lot of her communication work going forward, and we welcome her as well to the Edina team. It's been a pleasure working with them, and we look forward to having them join us as we journey forward in our mission.
Great. Any other additional items?
I think we should note that under the information section of our packet tonight, we did get a copy of the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook for 2012-13, and so that was the new draft of that, showing some minor edits from last year.
And does policy get involved in that, or they, that's handled by administration, correct?
It's handled by administration.
It reflects the policy.
Right. It takes pieces of various policies and puts them together in a handbook for the use of students and parents. So that all the disciplinary infractions that you'll see at the back part of that book, for example, come from Policy 506.
Great, lots of work. Thank you all. Additional items? Seeing none, can I add a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Any objection to, anyone have an objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned.